Good morning, everyone. It's September 20th, Tuesday, September 20th. The time is 9:34 a.m. Erica, can you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Okay, if everyone can please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The motion passes 4-0. So, next item on our agenda is awards and presentations. So, this morning, we have a check presentation from the Metropolitan Football Stadium District. So, we are excited to announce Adams County youth will soon benefit from the recent sale of the Denver Broncos, something I never thought would happen in my lifetime. So, the origins of this date back to 1998. Taxpayers funded 75% of the Broncos stadium cost through a 1/10 of 1% sales tax. The newly-named Empower Field at Mile High is owned by the Metropolitan Football Stadium District, which is made up of seven metro-area counties: Adams, Arapahoe, Brumfield, Boulder, Denver, Douglas, and Jefferson County. And last month, the Metropolitan Football Stadium District Board voted unanimously to approve a share-back amount of just over $41 million. The amount Adams County receives will be based on the breakdown of how much of the district tax was collected from each locale. Additionally, the lease agreements and state law calls for the money to be spent on youth activity programs. So, this morning, I'm honored, and he's here at the podium, to introduce Mr. Gene Chancio from the Metropolitan Football Stadium District. Gene has been the Adams County representative on this board, on the district board, since the inception of the Metropolitan Football District. So, Mr. Chancio, I hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, your honor, commissioners. It's great to be here, and even though I practiced law for 50 years, I'm going to make this short and sweet. But the terms that I've been serving are four years, so each time I would come back and ask to have permission to be the county's representative on Metropolitan Football Stadium District, and a lot of the times, the question was, "Do you think we'll ever get anything back from what we have had to pay out in sales tax over the years?" And I'm happy to say, finally, the answer is yes. And one thing that I would just really briefly, in terms of a history of it, is original Mile High Stadium, in '95, the legislature created this bill, as you mentioned, to create the district, and they had a number of items in there that they insisted would be in the lease with whatever team was going to be in there, which, of course, is the Broncos. And, of course, we did exactly what they said. So, the provision 33 of our lease with the Broncos says that if ever the Broncos are sold to a new group or individual, that one time, the district would get back a percentage of the net amount of the sales price. And so, the legislation and the lease says with a minimum to be paid of $1 million to the district. And it turned out that our share, the district's share, is $41,37,900. And that's because it sold for $4.6 billion. So, you can kind of think back to '95, what they really thought it was probably going to sell for. And the impetus, of course, was to keep the Broncos here and not have to have them leave. That's my belief, anyway. Anyway, so, I appreciate being able to represent you all these years, and I do have to say, though, that there were two years that another person who were named, unnamed, Bill Spano, sat, and then I got appointed. And during that two years, they got to go all around the country and see all the brand-new stadiums, and then I got appointed. That's life. But in any event, so, the way that the district came about our numbers was we had to come to a net number with the Broncos. And so, we hired an independent auditor who looked at all of their books to make sure that they were not subtracting from the gross sales price something that was not anticipated as being a legitimate expense of theirs. And so, once that was done, that's how we came up with the $41 million. And then, we felt, as a board, that the best way to do it would be to return to the counties and/or cities whoever collected the tax that amount of share percentage-wise that they collected over that 10 years. And so, I did want to point out one thing, and then tell you that in the check that I'm about to give to you guys, there are four unincorporated areas of Adams County that are included in your amount, which is Bar Lake, Strasburg, Henderson, and Locklands. Because they are not incorporated, we wouldn't know who to send the check to, right? So, they're included in yours. But two things I'd love to tell people about, in old Mile High, one of the things in the provision of the bill was that we're to the board was to determine, one, whether Mile High, the old Mile High, could be refurbished, remodeled. The answer was no. And so, then they had a site-selection committee, went through all of that, and the old Mile High was 870,000 square feet, 875,000, and held 76,125 fans. The stadium now called Empower because of the naming rights, Empower Field at Mile High, is 1.8 million square feet and exactly the same number of seats per fan. So, it's incredibly large compared to the old one. In any event, if I can approach, I would like to give to the chairperson of our county the sum of $1,144,816.2, which is $144,000 that we thought the whole district might get, right?
Right.
So, the only two counties that were, somebody's going to show up personally and do this is Adams and Jefferson, because we're the oldest members of the board, I mean, oldest serving, right? In any of that, if I can approach, I would like to give you the check, and then there is the...
Yes, Mr. Chancio. Yes, we're going to come down and take a picture with you. Yes. Any comments from the board before we head down? Commissioner Henry?
Yeah, I really appreciate you serving as long as you have, and I appreciate everything that you've done. What I really would like to ask this board that we do with that money, I actually saw a story recently about how a lot of our youth can no longer afford the equipment, the sports equipment. And having been, and I apologize for my phone going crazy, what I, as a single mom, one of the things I couldn't do is provide my own children with the sports equipment. And that was many years ago. My son is now 42, and I know that it is extremely hard for parents now to provide their children with the sports equipment that they need to play sports. And it is so important for them to be involved in sports, to stay in school, to be able to provide that. So, I'm hoping that is one of the programs that we, as a board, would consider to provide that money, to use that money for, is to provide sports equipment for our children here in Adams County, for those who cannot afford the equipment that it requires, especially hockey. I cannot believe how expensive Commissioner Odoricio spends for his son to play hockey. An Italian that plays hockey, who would ever thought an Italian would play hockey? Maybe something else, but not an Italian. But, yeah, it's an honor to be able to take that money and maybe provide it in our community. You know, this is an incredible opportunity, so, thank you. Yes, yeah, this is a great opportunity for our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, I completely agree. You know, we know that this money needs to be reinvested into youth sports, and we're really looking forward to all the different ways and all the different sports that we can support. You know, I think that it pulls up for all of us. The times where youth sports were meaningful in our character development and also our affection for school. I know that for me, I had the privilege of having many great coaches, and being on varsity sports was a critical component of me feeling included at school. I had the honor of attending my coach's funeral about three years ago, Coach Bill Simon. He went to high school briefly in the state of Missouri. I know it might shock some of you. And he was in the Missouri Hall of Fame for youth coaches. And Mr. Simon used to keep a hot chocolate machine in his office, and whenever we were having a rough time at school, we would just swing by and have a cup of cocoa and talk with him about any of our worries. And we know from data that youth coaches are that additional mentor that our youth need to make it through high school and into adulthood. And anything we can do to help families feel more financially secure in participating in youth sports and provide that character development to our kiddos, I think is so important. It was meaningful to me, and I know that it will be meaningful to many, many children as they transition into adulthood by supporting youth sports with this dispersment. So, thank you for your many years of service, and I am excited to have this opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Odoricio?
Thank you, Mr. Chancio. Thank you for your many years of service, both on this board and in the overall general community. You've done a great job and served as quite a mentor and role model to so many folks in our community. Thank you very much. I can tell you that we are going to take this money and do some good work with it, and the folks of Adams County particularly, our youth, will benefit from it. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chancio. Thank you very much, Denver Broncos. And we look forward to showing in the future exactly what we will do with this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just going to end. I had a moment, some time last week, to spend with Gene Chancio, and it was time well spent. I can tell you that he has many stories about Mile High Stadium and the district and being one of the longest-serving members and our only serving member here in Adams County. And one thing that really struck me is that when he was telling a story about the first event that was held at the new stadium. So, he has trivial pursuit blood in him, and the first event held at Mile High, what we call Mile High Stadium, the natives, we call it Mile High Stadium, happened on September 10th of 2001. So, the day before the World Trade Center. So, we know it happened on September 11th. So, that's what was to be a celebration on the 10th was really taken under by what the national tragedy was at the time. And so, Mile High really has just been a part of the fabric, and I don't remember what the first event was. That just fell to the wayside until we had coffee, and that was just such a touching, one of the touching stories that you were able to tell that day. And I just want to thank you so much for your service to the county and for being so thoughtful about how to, you know, so many years ago, on how to put this formula in place that really is transcending generations in Adams County. We never thought, I never thought second-generation Colorado that the Denver Broncos would ever be sold, yet here we are. So, I think the funding will, it'll be discussed by the board. I hope that it transcends generations. This is definitely funding that can alter, change the lives of many youth and kids in Adams County, and I look forward to that discussion. I think it will be very heartfelt. Mr. Chancio, I invite you back to be part of those discussions in the audience.
That would be great, anytime.
Okay, appreciate it. So, we're going to come down. This is a historic moment for the county, and we're going to come down and take a picture with you.
I was going to tell you that the newest story now I'm going to add to my repertoire of trivia is that we're the first stadium where the crowd counted down the time clock on Sunday. Or the new quarterback and coach.
I missed that game, but I heard all about it. Okay, we're going to come down and see, and then after we take the picture, we're going to take about a five-minute break.
And just to note, we're not trying to start the rumor that we're going to be trying to get the new stadium up here in Adams County. But if that rumor has started, let's have some fun with it.
Fair enough.
But we have room for a new stadium, just saying. If they need a new stadium.
I was going to give it to the lawyer, finance director right now. Okay, next item on our agenda, we're back in session, the time is 10:03, is public comment.
We do have two people signed up today.
Okay.
The first person is Michelle Tuis.
Yeah, Michelle, come on to the podium here and state your name and address for the record. And then you have three minutes to provide remarks.
So my name is Michelle Tuis. It's 10738 here on Street, B301, North Glen, Colorado 80234. So I live in Adams County and I saw that there was some Bitcoin mining stuff that was maybe going to be stopped. And I've been studying Bitcoin for about a year now, pretty much every day, and it's very used more. I've heard, you know, clothes dryers use more. It's not so much what is using energy, but if that energy is important or not. And Bitcoin is actually incredibly, incredibly important. About 10 years ago, I was a case manager for refugee resettlement in Denver. And I met a lot of people that, you know, they were very successful in their other countries. They were doctors, they were, had like large property farms. And when they got to America, they had the clothes on their back. And Bitcoin, even today now, I'm not exaggerating when I say that it saves people's lives, saves children's lives. It's more important than a clothes dryer, it's more important than Christmas lights. It is, it's, people can store their wealth there, they can go to another country and they have their money when they get to another country. And they can use that to buy food, they can use that to buy clothing, they can use that to get a place to live for their children. And that is much more important than some of the other things that we use energy for. And then you have Europe, this year, this winter, you'll probably have people moving out of Europe just to get somewhere warm, so they can keep their kids warm, they can keep their families warm. And they're going to have to leave their homes and their property behind. So, I mean, energy is extremely important. We can't get away from that. Even renewable energy, when you are building things like windmills, you have to use, at this point in time, you have to use a lot of oil and gas products in order to build those things. And we can't get away from that. So if we're going to be using oil and gas, it makes sense to take some of the byproducts that are bad for the environment, turn them into less dangerous byproducts, so methane into CO2, because methane is actually worse. And yeah, so I would hate to see it be banned.
Thank you. Erica?
Mike Clear.
Good morning, Mike. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Mike Clear. I live at 7930 East Kenyon Avenue in Denver. Thank you for having me again. I'm glad to see you all, I guess we're down one today, but I'm glad to see your faces. I just wanted to say that I'm here in support of the privilege to use stranded natural gas for the purpose of electricity generation at the well pad. This electricity can then be used for the most economically viable process, which at present is distributed off-grid data centers. As, as the commissioners have defined it in your writings, cryptocurrency mining, but I, I want to broaden that thought to just consider we could do anything with that data center, right? We could store Google pictures, we could store text messages for AT&amp;T, sky's the limit. I did take note last week that the commission's biggest concern is health and safety. And I'm grateful for your concern and I'd appreciate the opportunity to meet with each one of you to share my knowledge and to better understand this issue from your perspective. I'm trying as hard as I can to put myself in everybody's shoes, just so I can give the best advice as a member of the community. I did reach out to each one of you individually last week. I did hear from one of you, I'm not going to dox you, but I appreciate the time we took to sit down and talk about this. And I'm more than willing to meet with the rest of you individually or together without violating any quorum rules to discuss this further and share what I know. I'm, I'm not an expert, but I do really think this is an important issue. And I'm happy to tell you what I know and hopefully drive this discussion towards an outcome that's beneficial to your community, beneficial to all of the participants and stakeholders, and ultimately doesn't limit anybody's rights or access to electricity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clear. Next item on our agenda is elected officials communication. Commissioner Pinter.
Hey, just a follow-up. Really love hearing from you both, Mike and Michelle, thank you both for coming down. I sent, just by way of transparency, asked for staff to put together a meeting with you, Mr. Clear, to try to make sure that you get some of your questions answered. And I know that that's in process. And as you can see, our county management team is away this week at a conference. There's a lot of empty chairs in the front row, so I know they're working on that to try to find a way to answer your questions. Obviously, we want to provide opportunities for economic development of a variety of types in Adams County and then foster that in the state of Colorado. And that includes data centers, which as you pointed out, are useful for many, many things and are necessary for a continuous operation of business in a number of sectors. With regard to our concerns around healthcare, the public health of our community, Adams County has traditionally had pretty abysmal air quality rates as well as water quality. And we are, you'll have to understand that we are very protective of our residents. And while we want to support industry moving forward, it needs to be done in a way that's compatible and get to a permitting process that is compatible with public health standards, air quality standards that reflect other industries in the state of Colorado. And that's why we want to get to a permitting process that is clear, transparent, and reliable. And I look forward to having those conversations with you. Michelle, just to, Ms. Tuis from North Glen, I just, just a brief comment as well, the same thing. Bitcoining is, or crypto mining is happening, I'm sure, all over the county of Adams right now. This is more a matter of using the stranded natural gas and how it's being extracted from the ground and making sure that when we're using any kind of natural gas extraction process, that it meets air quality standards. That's the crux of the issue. And then obviously, there's always ongoing questions about noise and community habitability and generators, and you wouldn't want a generator shot, you know, popping up right next to your house, I am sure. So you want us to be thoughtful about where generators go and how they're used in neighborhoods. So generally speaking, I'm really glad to hear from both of you. I'm glad that this is an ongoing issue for you guys. But let, you need to, you need to know that we're working on it. We take your concerns seriously and that we support economic development moving forward. Just need to do it in a way that's in harmony with community, especially when you're talking about any type of impacts to air quality, water quality, and our public health.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Odegaard.
Yes, I want to thank the folks who came out and talked today. There's no bias against Bitcoin, I can promise you that. The challenges that we're having is just figuring out additional uses that we're not permitted on the well pad that we've been working hard to make sure that we regulate for the purposes of health and safety. In fact, I actually look forward to further conversations and learning more about how to reduce waste, increase innovation, while also addressing issues of noise, heat, pollution, health, safety, and quality of life. I think we as Americans thrive on these innovative opportunities to reduce waste and turn them into something valuable. And I look forward to the conversation on how this can be progressed in Adams County across the United States. Because if you look at the history of the United States, some of the most innovative things that have come about have been ways to reduce waste or turn waste into something very valuable. And so I'm anxious to see how this goes. Once again, health, safety, quality of life, those are the things that I'm going to be looking at whenever we have this discussion. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item on our agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent calendar as written in the agenda.
Second. Motion passes for zero. So we're on to new business. County Attorney, yes, good morning, Heidi.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am fulfilling the role of the county manager today. We have one item under the county manager for new business, and that will be presented by Human Services Director Katie McDougall. And it's a resolution approving the program year 2022 update to the Adams County Workforce Development Board regional and local four-year plans of the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act of 2014.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Katie McDougall, the Human Services Director. The Workforce and Innovation Opportunity Act requires the Workforce Development Board to submit a new regional plan every four years. This plan is a multi-regional workforce collaborative. Updates to the plan this year focus on having a skilled workforce, job quality, blending and braiding funding, and working with new Americans. I'm asking for your approval of this plan. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions from the board?
No. Madam Chair, I don't have any questions. I would move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion passes for zero. Thank you, Katie. So now the county attorney, in your official capacity.
Good morning, again. So we have three executive sessions on your agenda today. The first is pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the Helvee case. And I would also like to add the Hovee and Olguen cases to that executive session.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. And then the next is pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding airport leases.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right. And lastly, pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding payroll taxes.
Motion by Henry and second by Odegaard.
Good morning, again. So we have three executive sessions on your agenda today. The first is pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B and E, for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the Helvee case. And I would also like to add the Hovee and Olguin cases to that executive session.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. And then the next is pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding airport leases.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right. And lastly, pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding payroll taxes.
Motion by Henry and second by Odegaard. Motion passes for zero. Thank you so much, Heidi. Okay, with no additional items on the agenda, we are adjourned this morning at 10:16 a.m.